Everything working well?
It's not about calling it a lot. Like old people, never called them in the middle of the day. Are you sleeping or are you drunk? Best in the family, I say.
Um, do you have a plan to do something with this table here?
All right, it's six thirty. Jump this here, didn't it? We call the nation to complete the order to join the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Here we go, call Councilman Meyer.
Yeah.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Councilman Matt.
Here.
And Councilman Reed.
Here.
Councilman Wood, business, not present, also present is the attorney, Ken Johnson. Welcome back to the administrative office of state and the chief of intern. In year twelve. All right, on the agenda, if we make a change, the agenda will move up the E D A update to the source of property. We'll move that up when we do the, um, E D, we'll discuss that as well. Okay. Motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Meyer to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. Uh, citizens of the council, is there anyone who'd like to address the council tonight, uh, that's not on the agenda? Okay. You can move on.
Yeah, that was, it's you. Yeah. My name is Dale Armstrong.
Come up, come up here. I'm the station man and.
I'm Dale Armstrong from Dallas, and I've been a coach for so many years, and I really enjoy the Coach Shop here in town. They've done wonderful things for us, and I belong to a group also in the cities, and we've come out here and just visited with them, and they come out several times shopping. In the meantime, we go, like, within the city, go to Quell Retreats, they're finding hard places to go. Um, we want to actually go to Wisconsin now because we can't. Once you're booked and said you want to stay going to, and so they book them every year, so they're hard to get into one too, and I support this group. They've done wonderful job, and I hope that you will support them and be a big part for you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Searns, um, this one here as well, and I wanted to duplicate what she just said, that the full shop is a wonderful addition. Um, our retreat group goes to St. Cloud, so it would be great to have some things more local here as well. And I just think, um, with all of their plans, that it would just be a great addition to the community, um, bring people from all over the state and other states. And, uh, you know, they would all be spending money here in town at the restaurants and the gas stations and, um, please consider it.
Thank you.
Bill Alderman, Laura Franklin, from the E D A. We've been messing with this thing since last July on the water and sewer going out to this, uh, piece of land that the E D A owns. And I think tonight you gotta make a decision if you're gonna put water and sewer out there, or are you gonna let these ladies do the sewer or their own septic in the well? It's time to get on, get going on this issue. These ladies want to build a heck of a building up for us in the city of Arlington. We're gonna miss opportunity. They're not gonna keep putting doing this, getting hung on by whatever you guys are doing or whatever we need to do. So I think we need to make a decision tonight, put the well and septic in. And I think that the E D A, I will recommend that we give them the whole ten acres, because they're gonna need it with their water and sewer. So whatever you guys decide tonight to do, the water and sewer, if we can't afford it, the city can't afford it, they can't get it done in time, these ladies are ready to dig. And if we miss this opportunity, we got a problem in this town. I mean, we don't want business to come into this town, and that's a dig. So that's all I gotta say, but we need to move on that tonight. Because we were promised on the E D A that we're gonna have special meetings and meetings, special meetings to get this done, and we haven't had any. You can, you know, so I think tonight you better decide, because these ladies are ready to move, so, and we can't move. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, move on. Got a couple pro- proclamations to read here, uh, to, to, uh, plan, um. Police Week proclamation to designate the week of May eleventh through the seventeenth, uh, twenty twenty five is Police Week. Um, whereas the safety and well-being of the community are paramount, paramount importance, and whereas law enforcement officers play a vital role in safeguarding our neighborhood schools and public spaces. And whereas the men and women of their own police department exemplify courage, dedication, and professionalism in their commitment to protecting and serving their citizens. And whereas Police Week provides an opportunity for us to honor, express, and our gratitude to those who serve in law enforcement, remembering those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. And support those who continue to uphold the noble tradition of policing. And whereas this year marks the sixty-third anniversary of National Police Week, time communities across nation, or across our nation to recognize the contributions and sacrifices of law enforcement officers. Now therefore, I, Matthew Sherpy, Mayor of the City of Arlington, do hereby proclaim the week of May eleventh through the seventeenth, twenty twenty five, as Police Week in our city. I call upon our residents to join me in expressing appreciation for the dedicated services of our police officers, and to put their faith in activities that honor their contributions to our community. I further call upon residents to observe Peace Officer Memorial Day on the May fifteenth, and we pay tribute to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty, and to show support for their families, friends, and colleagues. If witnesses were out, I hear, I have here on two sets my hands and call the Seal of Arlington to be affixed this, uh, fifth day of May, year twenty twenty five. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Arlington will, will observe May eleventh through the twenty, or through the seventeenth, twenty twenty five, as National Police Week in Arlington. And public publicity shows our service of our law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. And with that, we'll go into EMS Week as well, which is, um, designate the week of May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty five, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Excuse me. Uh, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out of hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedic, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other hospital medical service providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their escape skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services provided by designating Emergency Medical Service Week. And therefore, I, Matthew Sherpy, Mayor of City, Mayor of Arlington, Minnesota, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty five, as Emergency Medical Service Week. Okay. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of approval of bills, approval of April seventh, twenty twenty five, to become twenty minutes. Approved hiring of Leonard Fisher and latent dose for part-time seasonal positions for the summer months between school and Kenny Purshow for spring and fall, and fill in if needed during the summer at seventeen dollars an hour. Pro off-sale liquor license for Arlington liquors, off-sale on, off-sale on, on sale, and Sunday liquor license for Arlington dugout, on sale and Sunday liquor license for Double Tap, on sale, off sale, and Sunday liquor license for Arlington House, and, uh, city, the city office, summer hours.
I got two questions on bills, please. Um, number one is at Duell, we spend about thirty, forty thousand a year on them, what is?
That's our auditors.
Yeah, I know, but I, you know, community said we tell them that they're half, some of them are thirty, some are sweater.
Uh, do you want for our auditors, if you want us to look at other?
No, that's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
Yes, I don't have the answer. Um, the other one is for the.
Do you want to verify your answer on the computer?
Um, I guess I'm just, what, what services are they doing? Are they doing a bunch of contracts or just normally it's just a?
They're doing our audit for us to state.
Yeah. And other towns are paying like ten to twelve thousand a year, and we're paying.
You know what other town?
The place on Duell, ours, I think, on Duell's where they got, yeah, I know the other town.
Okay. Well, see, when I share your memory, just, um, if our services are, someone?
The other one I got is for the police chief, um, and I know we got contract, uh, state bids for tires, I was just wondering, I talked to the three tire distributors in Arlington, Manworth and Rock Shovel Land, and, uh, Automotive, I assume, with the Glacier by tires, that's a state contract, but you don't have to buy the state contract.
No, we don't.
Right, it's, they don't, you all have to refresh from our own community of gas stations. Okay, that's all I have.
All, all agree with you there. I, I would like to see more business, I mean, I mean, if we don't have to, I don't know, we'll, uh, out of town, we get tires, we, we have to prepare for it, it would be a really good idea.
And I, I, I'm not arguing with the chief, I'm just wondering.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I made a motion to approve.
A second. Motion by Councilman Reed, second by Councilman Meyer to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. Motion passed. All right, I'm a new business, uh, street project update. Jason, welcome.
Thank you. Rob Friend. Thanks. I wanted to introduce Derek Housey. You may have seen his correspondence. He's been, uh, the project engineer that's been helping us out, uh, with this year's project. I just wanted to bring him along to, uh, sort of base in the name, and, uh, he knows more about the project at this point than I do. So he's, he's certainly helping with the R P Rs that are out there on the projects, helping running our construction meetings, and, uh, keeping an eye on the, on the project and stuff. So wanted to bring him, we're gonna introduce him.
Okay.
Okay, um, an update on the project, I think, uh, things are obviously progressing, um, on Chandler Street, we are getting down to the last part of the utilities, wherever we're looking at services and a little bit of storm sewer, uh, on that. And then we'll be seeing some of the, the grade group coming in immediately after them, and I think that's, uh, looks like next week, right?
Yeah.
So, um, we did get a new co- uh, new schedule from the contractor, and we'll talk about this more at our construction meeting tomorrow, it's really a flush itself. Not a significant change other than, um, Brooks, and then we're gonna be doing some of the work behind the hospital here in the sooner rather than later. Uh, we've been, uh, plenty of correspondence with the hospital, and that their water shut down and that hookup and the logistics of that, and really make sure that that coordination is happening and ongoing all the way through the execution of that. So everybody is in the loop on that, and, uh, we'll make sure that that continues to happen. So just a minor, uh, change there was due to some of the depth of the utilities on Brook Street, and not necessarily having the two, two crews on top of each other. It felt like it would be a little bit more efficient to have them separated. So, um, that's a little bit of an update there, uh, the crossing of Highway five, you know, we have that coming up here. Certain amount was two weeks worth of notice on that, and twenty days, twenty, twenty-one days to construct that. That's been pushed back one week, so it looks like the first week in June, not necessarily the day right after Memorial Day, um, so just shifting a few days. But again, we'll continue to keep up on that schedule, and there's a dynamic document, and the newsletters and, and communications that go out should, uh, keep everybody abreast as that may change. So what we do is have some good weather in front of us, so I would expect to see good progress. I know they were still working out here tonight, finishing things up at six o'clock when I came by, so, um, as far as that goes, I think everything is progressing pretty well. Anything I missed, Derek, or wanted to add, that covers it.
Okay. Yeah, Derek, I got a couple of questions on something that you just touched.
Yeah.
Uh, number one, the, uh, hospitals, I talked to some representatives at hospitals, they need to make sure they see that plan, it's gotta be decided at the state, and they said that's a lot of fast process, temporary water.
Okay.
So, okay, we need to talk with somebody there and get that plan into their hands, because they have to run it through the Department of Health.
Okay.
And then the other one I got is in regards to the detour, is that twenty-one days approximately that intersection could potentially be?
Yep.
Where's the detour gonna go?
Of course, yes.
Hold on, nine?
Been wanting to look at it.
It was, it was approved by MINDOT, yeah, and that is our permit.
Because residents have seen some of the detours signed, and I think we're gonna be running semi-stall, the residents are probably.
Absolutely, no, okay.
So that's just emergency for the, for the ambulance.
For the ambulance coming.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I, all I wanted to verify.
Yeah, and that permit with MINDOT is, uh, is still active, and we corresponded with them, and certainly when, that's why we needed those, uh, ten days notice, let them know on that specifics of that, so.
And then the last thing I might have, I don't know if people covered it, the contractor, they laid out a whole pile of ten, twelve, sixteen-inch concrete tile on six hundred block of Baker. And I drove by at ten thirty morning, about Brooks.
On Brooks, yep.
At ten thirty morning, there was no barricading, no tumbling cones around this, and I got a quote from, or I got a text from a couple of residents at four forty-five in the afternoon, and there still was not any protection out there.
Okay.
I think they put it on at night, but I see the city get sued for somebody hitting those pipes.
Yeah.
They do have cones, the thing is, we're paying a lot of traffic control, a lot of those traffic control signs are laying on the ground, and they can easily pick them up and move them.
Yeah, they're getting ready for those next phases, but yeah, to protect that during this point in time, because Brooks is still open.
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll pass that along, so. Thank you.
Um, my question, I guess, when, when you just, when they, so I saw they were putting up temporary lines on Brooks, when they tear into that, will people that live on the, on the north side of Brooks be able to park on Chandler? Or how are we gonna, how, where are they gonna be able to park on Brooks, so Chandler's put a car?
Yeah, that'll be actively being put back, there'll be gravel being brought in on Chandler there, um, want the gravel down and.
Yep.
Yeah. So, yeah, we'll be helping coordinate with that.
Yep.
Yeah, it's to not, you know, have everything just completely tore up, right? It's, they get back in there, and we're adamant about that, that decorating crew follows right along and get things back.
Because, yeah, we got, you know, because once you get tear up Brooks, anybody parking on Brooks that lives on the, I'd say the south side of, yeah, the south side of Chandler, they're all parking on Brooks right now.
Yep.
You take out.
Yep, take, or they take all of that up, they should have gravel on Chandler.
So we'll talk about that tomorrow and, and stress that, we can't leave that hanging and have holes side.
Yeah, are you, are you taking eighth to or just, just Brooks?
Eighth is the end, right? That's the last.
Yeah, 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 the, 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 from Brooks. Or, no, I just started this, I think, yeah, I don't, I don't.
We're gonna go all the way, I think, though.
Cool. No, it's not, yeah. I think that would be my only, this is, this is.
Exactly, so, yep, we'll, we'll confirm that, yep, that that part Chandler, yep, so, yeah, yeah.
Like this, they should be working on this stretch where it's already paved there, and then we, once this gets done, then they can do that for that portion, and we'll confirm that again tomorrow.
Yep.
Good point.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? I suppose, okay, so then we'll ch- we'll move on to the change order.
Yep. So this change order, we've been talking about it for quite some time, and, uh, it's been going, uh, uh, back and forth, uh, with, uh, with the state on reimbursement, making sure that all of those things are in line and they're paying for everything that they can pay for. And, uh, and coordinating that with the contractor. So we have that broken down into eligible Petrofund reimbursement, and then the non-Petrofund reimbursement items in that change order. And then we have that, uh, uh, change order payable in the, in the pay estimate tonight as well.
Which is not reimbursable.
The stuff on the, on the very bottom, on the bottom half, the eighty-six thousand. So some of the, of the water main material, um, that had to be replaced, that they would not pay for, even though they require, uh, with that, and then the compensation they would not pay for that. And certainly the contractor had that with this project. What we can understand is moving forward, we're crossing Highway five, but we understand there may be these, and so that's something we would be avoiding during the next one. So I would anticipate anything within the Highway five would be Petrofund reimbursable.
Just adding one thing with Petrofund, the way it works is that's like the maximum eligible mode, but typically what they do reimburse is a percentage of that. I think that form starts off at ninety percent of what is eligible to be reimbursed, and they, the Petrofund, uh, department will review that and determine what percentage they believe is reimbursable of the forty-nine thousand.
Okay. So do we need the motion to approve the change order?
Yeah.
Yes.
I made a motion to approve the change order for the.
Yes. One second. A second. All right, motion by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilman Meyer to approve, uh, the street project change order number one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Okay. Next will be, I suppose, pay estimate number six for the street project in the amount of four hundred twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-seven cents. And the motion to approve that. I made the motion to approve the, uh, the estimate number six for the street project. Okay?
One second.
Uh, motion by Councilmember Matt, second by Councilmember Reed, uh, to approve pay estimate number six for the street project in the amount of four hundred twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-seven cents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. All right, ten, contract for additional water services on seven nineteen West Chandler Street.
Well, this is the extra service coming, this is the background, but we really have time to add that extra service. Tends for you to look like it's straightforward, but it did go.
And so essentially, there isn't one of the second water and sewer hookup to the line that's being put in. Um, so this would just be an agreement to allow that to happen and essentially be paid for in that extra, if it's gonna be completed. Uh, I think we came out to, it's over forty-five, forty-six, eighty-two, uh, so specifically the property owner has agreed to pay that prior to any work being completed, so you don't have to worry about it.
That's a duplex right at the entrance to the trailer house?
Yes.
So is there two lines running in there, right? And then just one third one?
There's currently one line.
Oh, okay.
I have a problem. This would allow her to split the property in the future.
As far as then, she came in late last week and got the permit of, this is just to get up to the property line, and then she'll, she'll be responsible to get from the property line.
Okay. I made a motion to approve the contract for additional water services at seven nineteen West Chandler Street. Motion by Councilmember Williams to approve the contract for additional water services at seven nineteen West Chandler Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. All right, anything else for us?
I'm just, I want to stick around for the.
Yeah, you might as well.
Oh, that's true.
All right, um, all right, ambulance memo for the Lucas device request. Do you want to come up and?
Yeah. Good evening, uncle. This basically here has to answer any questions that you might have in regards to the memo requesting to either lie down the funds that we've obtained, they have here and the recent grant, um, money that we've got, uh, to replace the Lucas two device that we have.
I have a question, do we have one of these ambulances?
Right, no, right now we have one Lucas device, and that is in our primary unit. Metas of Lucas two.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the request. Seven minutes, I'll see you. One second. Motion by Councilmember Reed, second by Councilman Meyer to approve the ambulance request for the Lucas. Go by small favor.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Actually, what is it, can you explain what that is?
Yes, so the Lucas device is that, it's a compression system that essentially was designed to help kind of reduce the T P injuries for providers to provide. And the cool thing about that is it provides very good quality, consistent compressions that kind of helps with that CPR process for cardiac arrest management. So, um, this, this main goal is to provide more of a safe measure and an extra set of hands should you have to work with cardiac arrest. This, this main goal is to provide more of a safe measure and an extra set of hands should you have to work with cardiac arrest and, and to keep our providers safe, because back injuries is one of the major C D causes of injuries in our profession. So, to reduce that issue.
Quite the tool, and you don't want to see your work.
Nice.
But it's, it is, it's.
It's amazing.
It's amazing, fifty, that's been, even on the strongest person, they do that to them.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
I do have a quick update for you, so I, I got a hold of Everest to find out if the status on their truck, and I was disappointed. They, they emailed me back and they're, they said it was set for production in July, so, I haven't given them that line yet, unfortunately, but I felt the need to, uh, update on both, because I knew that was supposed to come in, but now we continue to wait.
Sure.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
All right, on for AC biz, period.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, the air conditioning biz, not sure if you guys had a chance to cruise over those, now, our, our kitchen, our air conditioning kitchen here, uh, has been out since last summer. Um, luckily, it really doesn't get used that much, um, however, so anyways, I was able to obtain some quotes on, uh, G S M, God's sheet metal was the only one who's been trying to offer, uh, several options. The other ones, they want to replace everything, just involves a commercial air handler that hangs from the ceiling in the janitor's closet, that's where your cooling coil is and the fan is lowered. Um, that, it's kind of a big task, um, but G S M was able, they're, they're the only ones that, like I said, they offered two different options, they were the cheapest anyways, um. You know, the option A, I don't know if you have it before you, but the option B is, is to get a new unit outside, a new interhandler unit, and reuse the line set, um, and that's a thousand dollars less than to replace everything. Uh, option B, they laid that out for me as to just replace, to get a new unit and then a new evaporating coil inside the handler, they're not sure that coil would fit inside the handler, they couldn't assure me that, and that's the whole, pretty much outdated. So, I don't feel confident in that option.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
So, for a thousand dollars more, we can have a new line set?
New line set?
Yeah, when you do air conditioning, you don't never want to use an old line set in case there's contamination in it, so.
Yeah.
To me, that's not even a question, right?
Now, the only other option I wouldn't just put before you guys is maybe portable air conditioning units, you could use when needed, for a few hundred dollars, but, um, you know.
I would agree with you.
Yeah, no, that's, that's.
I'll make a motion that we accept the air conditioning bid, option C, to replace the air conditioner in center, thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars.
Okay.
Second. Second. All right, motion by councilman Matt, second by councilman Reed to approve option C, to replace the air conditioner, uh, for thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars, all three say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. All right. The street work.
Hey, yeah, of our Lucus summer street work, uh, folks, uh, our chip ceiling, Pearson came in, the cheapest, uh, we're pretty familiar with him, we use them almost year in, year out, it's a good job. I, I would recommend hiring them again, for the chip ceiling. Do I go through these one by one, or to counsel if you want to, or?
I think this goes as almost all.
Okay.
And then, uh, crack fill bargains came in, that's good for that, there'd be a crack fill, this is all encompassing within the chip ceiling project, uh, crack filling that, and then there's, yeah, and after work, bargain was the best price for that as well. Anyway, it was for a total of, I don't know, a thousand, three hundred, three, four dollars and seventy cents, for the jobs. Questions, can you get a total for bargains?
Yep, uh, for crack fill, bargain was twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and eight. And then for gap mastic was sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty. Uh, this one first.
Pearson's is cheaper by a long way on the other side.
Well, Allied came in real close. Um, this was, he came in at the last minute on Friday, uh, Jeff said to send that to you, they were like four hundred dollars for. I'll let that get to the American additions, we get the, okay with that.
Ninety-seven, three thirty-four, combination two.
Uh, combination is three.
A three.
Yep.
I'm making a motion to approve the total quarter bid request of that, three thirty-four, for the chip ceiling, the crack fill bid, and, what's your, well, gap, gap mastic.
Motion by councilman Reed, second by councilman Berlin to approve the, um, bids for the chip ceiling, crack building, gap mastic, total ninety-seven thousand, three thirty-four, all three say aye.
Aye.
Post.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah. Yep. We're doing a lot, less lines here.
Yeah, we got a lot going on.
In there.
All right, uh, so, third maintenance worker posting.
So, over the last two years, we've kind of talked back and forth about the need for a third worker, and we did the twenty twenty-four budget, we decided to wait until twenty twenty-five. So, in our twenty twenty-five budget, um, we did a lot, you know, payroll for, to support a third maintenance worker, and I think for these team members quite a long time. With just the two of them, we've just identified that there's a lot that needs to be done, and I'm sure there's work there, so, Kirby and I worked with, uh, local government, we just kind of cleaned up the job description, and I think it was a little bit outdated, um, we changed with this job function, the job description. We planned to advertise with the insurance pay scale, um, starting potentially with the first three steps, depending on qualifications, um, we did, you know, some max potential, however, that's not the hiring range, so. We just wanted to get a phone for you guys to move forward and give you treatment, because that's what's in, given the numbers added to.
And it was budgeted for this here, so.
Any questions or thoughts?
I'll make a motion to approve the third work, uh, what it calls, posting. Second. Okay, motion by councilman Meyer, second by councilman Reed to approve the third maintenance worker posting, all three say aye.
Specializing. Uh, I'm, I'm not against it, I've only been on the council this time for four months, warming is, is specific, I mean, I mean, I realize you guys have talked about this for the past years, it seems, but it's pretty hard for me to understand it and vote for it, but I don't see a list of, of needs and jobs that are going to get done, and is it going to reduce overtime, is it gonna, uh, going to get rid of some of our contractual work, so. With that, I'm totally waiting against, just for, I've got no information on this, I really, and it ends with, and it's last year.
Well, thank you.
And, you know, yeah, we discussed it last year, it's quite often, especially during the budget process, and Kirby, it's just the two of them, they take care of a lot of stuff in town, you know, there's been times where, you know, there's just some things that, you know, get, get kind of.
Basically, essentially, we are able to do the very typical priorities weekly to do new stuff, just try to keep up, put out fires, and there's the, the projects, keep building, building, building. And, and then it leaves the contracting, you know, we could do a lot more tree work, we do a lot more, uh, anything, part of it. Yeah, and I, I'm not, not disqualifying what you're saying, I just am saying the point that, Phil, I can see it front of me in black and white, that this is what we can do, this is what we don't have to contract out to do the rewards, adding the third play, it's pretty tough for me to support. Yeah, and I, and I'm not trying to, I can say.
Yeah. I understand, so, I mean, um, I, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, I mean, you're talking how it will work out money-wise, what we can do.
No, no, yeah, you know, is it gonna save, is it gonna save overtime, are there contracts that we're doing now, contracts that.
We don't, we don't.
You know, there is, you know, overtime, I think the point is, is like, we're doing this very bare minimum, there's a lot of maintenance, we have twenty-nine buildings in the city that we have to maintain, and currently not really.
Yeah, the equipment will.
Getting in touch, so.
I think, I think it has to be taken into consideration, my position as a mall with technology, I'm on the computer a lot more, like, all of that stuff, I mean, so how people can reach me, you know, it's not just when I'm in the office for the landline, it's all day long, I'm, I'm, right? And you want to be a contractor, I was gonna say, too, you're, I mean, you're a supervisor, and I, I'm a worker, yeah.
You know, and I, I've made it quite, I think you guys realize it, I don't stick my nose in the city employees' business, that's not our role, our role is a council, not any of the council members. If you don't have a problem with it, as this evolves through the interview process, I would like to meet with Kirby and find out, you know, whether some of the things that are following up and where we need help. I just, like I say, I'm not going to have to go and mobbing out of place during that work.
Yep.
So, motion on the floor, all three say aye.
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 Post.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else, any updates, Kirby?
Uh, exactly. Think for me, well, I'm in the deep.
All right.
Thank you guys very much for being here now.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on, uh, quick claim deed responsive property, uh, you have that in your package, it can do the, the resolution, so, eventually this runs it over to the E D A, right?
Right, right.
Anything you want to?
Get the background, you know, we're working. Yeah, yeah, so, as everybody knows, um, so, so, Quixti has approached the E D A and hoping to acquire this piece of property, uh, through the process, we have been able to find that, and the property at the time isn't even owned by the E D A, it's outside these cities. So, in order to kind of get it all rolling, we need to transfer the property over to the E D A so that they can pursue the development agreement, purchase agreement, uh, and various things, so. There's a variety of things that the city is going to have to be involved in, though, it can be as simple as just transferring this piece of property, and that's what we're gonna have to figure out here. Um, so, as, as part of the process, so, Quixti has requested various things, various incentives, uh, for locating the business at that property, uh, some of that is going to include potentially some tack basements, uh, as well as sewer and water hookups. And determining, I guess, any other incentives that are going to go along with this property, and what the city's gonna require in return for that.
Now, we can do that, we'll do the E D A, we'll get through the quick claim deed first.
So, so, the other, the, the big part of this is that we've been discussing, and that I have had discussions with so-called the attorney, is the water and sewer lines, or wax there up to the property. Um, so, at this point, uh, the, probably the city authorities require these buildings to be fixed up to the city, water and sewer, uh, there is some exceptions to that, which I'll touch on. Uh, but, so the, I think that the major hiccup or the, the, the holdup, uh, I think it's gonna cost approximately, I think, three hundred.
Yeah, and the, at the very end of your package, the chase we did, and the update, the proposal, yeah, so if you open that up, your spend utilities up to that parcel is gonna be roughly three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. And I did, we talked to she, and then we've been in discussions about if the city can afford this, um, right off of that, looking at our cash balances, we don't have the cash for it, we would have to bond for it. Um, so, kind of through this process of working through the dollar amount, um, and then looking through our city's, um, section, in our utilities, chapter thirty, there is an exception to this, is if the city cannot afford to extend utilities, they may allow, so we've kind of started to explore that possibility. Um, well, I think it's important that you guys hear all this background, bringing it forward with the deed and, um, whatever resolutions follow. We're looking to, um, make that exception for them, we would just need to draft up a resolution stating that they are done. Um, also, keep in mind, we do have to follow business subsidy law, I was reading up on that, anything over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a subsidy package, we need to have a public hearing for that. Um, I did look up the land value, I think it's approximately a hundred and two thousand at this point, so, the land alone as a subsidy, subsidy package is not very fair, but yeah, right, and it kind of, you have complete information.
I agree, that, uh, ultimately, a sale by the E D A though, so, the, the E D A would be doing the sale, entering the development agreement, they would have to hold a public hearing, um, we'd have to have all the terms put together, make sense, so there'd be a public hearing for that aspect. Uh, we need to make sure that we're acting in conformity with, uh, some sort of subsidy policy, uh, we can't, uh, ultimately, this sale or this transfer, it has to be for the benefit of the public, uh, it has to serve the public, so we'd have to weigh how much we're giving, what we're giving, and have to tie that into the public, how does that serve the public? Uh, so, that would all tie into how our public policy, um, put together, um, so, I, I think that there's, there's a bit of stuff that needs to be figured out, um, all around. Now, that first step, though, is ultimately whether or not the city is going to transfer this land to the E D A, and then the E D A's gonna have to start digging through all this stuff. Um, I think it, it was certainly the purpose of this land, uh, was for or not development, so I think whether or not we're going was so filthy for somebody else, uh, this would probably be the first step that needs to be taken, and probably should have been taken quite some time ago, uh, before we.
Questions?
Is that our electrical service area, or is that?
Like the other pieces that'd be easy right now, but I mean, in the future, if we wanted to bring that in, that just requires an agreement, you know, I don't think it'd be a problem.
Yeah, and the only thing is I have expenses, so we put, we put price on that.
Yeah.
And, and I'm, I'm in full support, whatever the E D A and council brings in, I just want to make sure we're transparent, you know, this is worth this much, this is worth this much, this is worth this much, I don't want to say we're just helping this business, I want it all transparent, and I'll support whatever's front of the board, because.
Uh, so we wanted to, stuff to tell, so we want to transfer it to the E D A and have a consult rolling on this, or, so it's almost, then, I believe.
I think the lead has laid out, it really is a, a deed first, and then we'll work on the development agreement, if the fact of payment is possible, then we look at this whole package, structure, we're following, that's not a subsidy law, if a public hearing is required after the sale, we do a public hearing, but this is, that's where the can't be used out of.
Is that resolution twenty-five, yes?
Yeah, so, we want, we want to make a motion to this resolution twenty-five dash twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution twenty-five dash twenty zero two-five, resolution authorizing the transfer of G I D thirty-one point zero eight eight four, point zero zero.
There's second, second. Yep. Yes. All right, resolution twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five is the res- resolution authorizing the transfer of G I D three point zero eight eight four, point zero two zero, and this by councilman Reed, second by councilman Reed. Uh, I vote, I vote, all councilman Meyer.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Reed.
Yes.
Councilor Matt?
Yes.
And councilor Ling?
Yes.
If I have a favor and none against, the resolution passes.
Four.
Four. Of course, I have, it's a long case. Um, so, with that.
Just a question before you move on, is, are you guys wanting us to draft that resolution to look at the sewer and water? Um, if we are gonna look at a tax payment, we would just need information from the so, Quilty's plaintiffs on the proposed tax assessment amount, and then I can talk to Shannon about possible payment to pay back the utilities, but, I'm kind of thinking maybe more appropriate to go with the variance from the code, so.
Is there a, have a.
Uh, I don't see how that you could justify that dollar amount for one.
Yeah, I thought there was something in there, not only that, but I think there's something else in there, in order to hope, um, that it's put in for the benefit of one, two, or three property owners, and it's not cross affected to them to a certain, meaning that the price was on them, so.
Right, I mean, even though civil health is out there, if we brought them to so far to get service, even the service line that's happening, it wouldn't make sense.
Yeah, and I would assume that, that this will be up to the E D A to work with them on the developers' agreement, and maybe they're not at all interested in putting it in the well, except if this is later.
Do we have numbers on that?
For what?
Well, except.
That would be there, once they own the property, that would be there, so that would be a privately owned well and septic.
Sure, it's, Jason, I know you're not a septic designer, but probably at least a third of this, if not forty percent of this.
Significant, yeah.
This is a three hundred.
A third may not be far off, yeah, I had certainly had it under the concept.
I think it's still be up in a hundred, hundred and twenty-five thousand range, but I can't remember the septic system as well.
I guess I know it's, it's one of the stopping points for them, so if I know a direction to move forward, if I should work on a resolution, and then maybe they can work on their numbers and make the decision by next council. Does that seem appropriate?
I would say, yeah.
And then, so if we transfer this property to the E D A, then they're in charge of starting the work and develop, develop.
So, development agreement, but you guys still have to locate the variant, yeah.
Yeah, we have to locate the variant.
So, there's gonna be, yes, the, the variance on the sewer and the water, it's gonna be the tax payment stuff, we're gonna have to go through the city, if that's ultimately what we're gonna do on it, so there's gonna be aspects that the city still has to sign on, so.
And is the tax payment very similar to tip?
It is different, uh, so essentially, we would have to get the numbers, um, so essentially, we can refund or pay back.
It's the recoverable taxes on the improvement that they pay back or return.
So, that would essentially be the tip.
Okay.
Uh, but the tax payment would be, I guess, whatever they're paying in on taxes directly to the city.
But they may use it for an upgrade, like, if they paid for the utility extension, then we could offer a tax payment to help refund on that way.
So, that would be up to the fifteen years of math. We have to look at all the tax numbers that we, that we turn on that, attention numbers.
Okay, questions, anything? So, we can, uh, I mean, if, if E D A gets their stuff together, we can possibly call, I mean, we have to wait for a month, if we call a special meeting, then, okay.
For the variance?
Yeah.
That would be completely up to you guys.
Okay. Same with the question, uh, yeah, alright, good.
So, can I take it as a no, if we're not bringing up sewer and water?
Well, I think that's what, I wanted to have a chance to talk with you guys, and you could figure out hearing numbers before, unless you already have your, with your own septic and well, if you wanted to look at quotes.
Right, um, so, yeah, so we'll get quotes, and then.
Just so you have a whole picture of what you're deciding, I think the council is willing to do the variance, to let you guys do a septic now.
Right, but not sewer and water.
At this point, it's too expensive for the city to pay cash, so if, if, the only way we probably could do it would be to use that tax payment, but that's all contingent on your market assessment, because if there's not enough value in it to pay it back, we wouldn't be able to do it.
Yes, yeah, I understand.
Uh, no, but other council members, so I would rely strongly on the E D A's negotiation on the belt agreement, what comes to the sewer system in the wild versus city water and sewer. I mean, it's gonna be very, very difficult to negotiate yourself, and if they think that that's the best agreement to work out with you guys, then I guess that's the recommendation, if they would put in this upper screen and bring it back to us, that's what you guys agree, I'll speak for myself.
Yeah, the E D A will have their recommendations coming out of it, I'm sure, that, or right now, that she said the city can't afford the sewer and water out there, so it's gonna.
Yes, and that's literally what I asked for, right, right, yes, no.
Yep.
Not somewhere between, yeah, it's very helpful to have a yes or no.
Good.
I think I am.
You got anything to say from there? Yeah, okay, so, anything else on the E D A update for this responsive property?
We'll keep going on.
So, that's it, if the E D A negotiates this stuff out, then we call a special meeting.
If it required, you guys.
If it required, just a little quickly on this, we get the, we definitely call a special meeting, it's not a month, or at all.
Now, I think that the, the major hurdle was gonna be if we were running these lines, we'd have to put it off for public bidding, which was going too slow, and everything. So, it, I think with that option to do this, essentially a variance or allowing that septic and well is going to cut that process down significantly. It, I guess, it's whether or not, uh, so, Quilty's wanting to do that.
Alright.
Come on, Lee.
Well, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, okay, we'll move on. Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two five, this is a resolution accepting donation of, uh, three thousand five hundred dollars from the club co-op to the town's employee.
I'll introduce resolution twenty-two, twenty-two five, uh, uh, resolution for thirty-five hundred, that's a great, that's a good idea, come to the other area.
Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two five, and that's by councilor Ling, second by councilor Meyer, this is a resolution accepting donation of three thousand five hundred dollars from the club co-op to the town's employee department.
What I will call, councilor Reed and Matt?
Yes.
Councilor Reed.
Yes.
Councilor Ling?
Yes.
And councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent, motion passes. Any other, care on this? Alright. Land of rest. I'm really sensitive, I think a riot. Alright, resolution twenty-three dash twenty-five twenty-five, the resolution accepting donation of three thousand five hundred dollars from the club co-op to the town's employee department.
I'll introduce resolution twenty-three, twenty-two five, uh, thirty-five hundred, that's naming the donation of thirty-five hundred, uh, from the club co-op to our.
Great, second? Second. Alright, resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two five, and this is by councilor Ling, second by councilor Matt, this is a resolution accepting a donation of three thousand five hundred dollars from the club co-op to their own employee department. I don't know what, what, what I will call, councilor Ling?
Yes.
Councilor Matt?
Yes.
Councilor Reed?
Yes.
And councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent, the motion passes. Alright, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-two five, this is the lock combination, you want to explain this over with?
Um, I wasn't there, but my goal.
Yeah, they came in and, uh, this couple ones, four blocks, one of the houses, one, they wanna build a detached garage on the other block, so they need to join it together. And, planning a zone, you have no problem with it. Okay. So, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five lock combination. Any second? Alright, so, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-two five, and this is by councilor Meyer, second by councilor Reed, this is a resolution, res- 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 resolution approving the lock combination of our sole number three point, thirty-one point zero seven one nine point four eight oh, and thirty-one point zero seven one nine point four nine oh. What I will call, councilor Matt?
Yes.
Councilor Reed?
Yes.
Councilor Ling?
Yes.
And councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent, the motion passes. Okay, um, moving on to old business, uh, just, uh, update on overtime and all the rest of the last meeting, um, and, uh.
Um, yeah, I mean, I wasn't here, I might just move on here, kind of bridge things, we could then put together a report for you guys, overtime from twenty-four to twenty-five. I'll pass it down. You had done this already?
One more, one more.
So, as you can see, in twenty twenty-four, we had, uh, an operating overtime of twelve, just over twelve thousand dollars. Uh, we are budgeted for just over that this year, we are a quarter of our way through the year, and we are right on twenty-five percent. Uh, beginning of the year is always our heaviest time for overtime, we have people that have taken vacations, we also, uh, have significant training during the first six months of the year, that's where we incur most of our overtime. And as you can see, the rest of the city basically doesn't operate with overtime. Uh, running a police department without overtime is virtually impossible, we, we operate on holidays, weekends, uh, we have to cover sick calls. Uh, we have people here, and there's gonna be overtime incurred with that. Uh, we, we, my guys and y'all know that I don't like overtime, I don't wanna pay it, I don't have to, uh, but I don't want the city not having coverage here.
Has the overtime number gone down since you called from the three-person force group, four-person?
It, it will, it will go down, I would almost guarantee it will go up this year, uh, just because, uh, we are now fully staffed. Last year, we were not, we were down in ops for, still for half the year, uh, so, I, I mean, we were covering those shifts with overtime. Uh, so, I would anticipate we are likely gonna be under budget this year. I had the budget because she was in her first year of probation, and you never know, if law enforcement is, they make it through probation, so.
With, uh, Jessica with public works and, and the other departments, do they work on P T O then, or?
Well, they use P T O if they, if you work a long day, or if there's a storm or something, we try to come, or, you know, try to adjust.
You know, and this, this is exactly what I was looking for. Um, my wife and I were actually on League Minnesota Cities and looking through their things, and they looked at the description of the city employee, and whether you guys like it or not, one of the job descriptions, I'm not a city employee, a council member and mayor, is oversight. And this, this satisfies some of my questions, and I probably didn't take a whole lot of hours putting this together, and if it's something that we can get quarterly or twice a year, I think it could be beneficial to us, I think it's part of our job as elected officials, and the oversight that we should be seeing on our, on our operations and our staffs. I, I appreciate getting, I, I do have one question with T C D, um, I believe you said that we get, that's four zero deaths where, uh, so, participates, whether it's county or something, they might be over in harbor county, or the other, they might be all in our own, and I know you get reimbursed wages, is that wages, payroll taxes, T B R A, fights, and everything?
That's all of that, yeah, and so, it's all based on the, the point is part of it, so, we submit all of that information, Lisa gives that all to the county, and the county runs that portion of it, so, whatever we are paying for that, that is all, every year, it gets sent over to the county, and the, the county is the administrator of the grant, T C D is state-funded grant money, so, the city does not pay that money. Uh, ultimately, we, we pay it out when it happens, but we get reimbursed.
But it does, does exclude there, everything, including.
Yeah, so, so, what we're on the hook for is vehicle gas, and to me, that's a big thing, we're just getting five hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of vehicles.
Vehicle gas, tires, maintenance, et cetera, reliability and risk, if something happens, we're, we're on that, we're on.
Okay, anyone else have questions about that, about T C D or anything like that? Okay.
And we can.
Well, and it's like I said before, Jessica, I may have it in my coming in, funding your guys with this stuff during your forty-hour work week, I don't think that's my job, I think my job is at council level to ask for it, so.
Well, the only thing I'd ask is if you want something before the meeting, there is absolutely nothing wrong with showing, you know, hey, can you guys prepare an overtime report? Or, hey, I was just wondering about this, can you prepare, that helps us kind of get the stuff, you don't have to wait a month.
When I was a manager, I had to update this monthly, vacation schedule, vacation schedules, the case of time, and overtime for, for all of my employees, plus our next level management, that we had to do on a monthly basis, so, okay, thank you.
Yep, and that, that, that would lead me into the next thing, you know, we all have our own opinions what role a council is, and, you know, looking at, and I'm not sure, you know, we trust, you know, Jess, Jessica's basically the C E O of the, of the city, and how, how our city, city org, you know, coal reads, you know, and looking at the League of Minnesota Cities, you know, our job as council members is to provide direction, set budgets, you know, create a plan for the future, a vision for the community, things like that, so, things like, like this, in my opinion, is more on, make, you know, that's why we have, department heads entrust them to make sure that this is being done, I mean, if you wanna ask for it, that's fine, but, and it's like, to me, that's just, you know, you're getting our employees, well, now they're gonna nitpick over this, and nitpick over that, we have a great crew of employees here, and, and I know in the past, I've heard, you know, past councils, you know, they were really in-depth, and some employees were on edge, whereas, I, in my opinion, as we let our, our, um, department heads make sure things are, you know, within, we create the budget for them to, to stay within, and they create the budget, but they're, and they will be watching, they watch that stuff. You know, um, I can, I compare it to like the board of directors for our co-op, you know, they, they have a C E O, they have their managers, they have their staff, managers do, you know, perform, you know, the board gives them direction, the C E O pushes it down the line, and the managers, you know, provide, get it to the employees, and, um, you know, they respond, you know, managers are the ones that get yelled at for this, you know, by the C E O for too much overtime or things like that, so. That's my view of how the role is, if everybody else has a different view of what our role is as council, I'm more willing to listen. But that's just my view, it's like, some of this stuff is, we trust our city and state staff to, to handle that, and we stay within budget, you know, same with our bills and all that.
I would just tell all of that, that I would hope that you guys agree that you trust us to operate the day-to-day, but I don't mean transparency, it's incredibly important to me, so if there is anything you're questioning, please feel free to hit up the phone, should be, you know, I mean, I've been happy.
Yeah, and if anybody wants to ask, it'll be on, on the agenda for the next meeting, just get it to by Wednesday, the next week before, if you want to buy the.
Wednesday, the week of, is probably like the very last, because we try to compile everything on Thursday, double check it Friday, and come down.
I'll get it to Jessica or myself, if you want something out of today's agenda, that makes the lot easier, so.
That, any questions, or any more discussion on that?
All that I can say is, is we, we've got a different opinion.
Right.
Every, every level of management has another level of, uh, company doesn't stop until it gets to the C T O, and then it goes down to your regional directors and so on and so forth, and, and it all comes to trust, and maybe I haven't been along here long enough, maybe I'm not gullible enough, maybe, maybe that's my problem, I'm not.
You're saying we're gullible?
I'm, I'm saying, maybe I'm not gullible enough to, to just to trust everything that's going on, maybe you may just get more information.
I think you need to be very careful with your words, though, because you imply that we're trying to do something sneaky or wrong or under the radar, and I would definitely not like.
You know, Kurt, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring something up here that takes back to your last council meeting, you said, our link is known as the city that contracts everything out, seems to me, you were on the council when they contracted our water and sewer out, we have water and sewer employees, why'd we get rid of them? I'd like to see us getting back into our own water and sewer employees.
That was one, that was one of your, your, uh, things you talked about in your rant. That was one, that was one of your, your things you talked about when you ran for council, yeah, exactly.
I never ran for council till last time.
On your thing that went into the Arlington enterprise.
What's that?
For, for, it was um, last fall, that was one of the things you put in there, that you would like to see.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that I'd like for, for us to look at that, I argue that I ran for council.
Yeah, well, when I was on the council, we did.
Yeah, and why?
I stepped away from it, number one, because I worked for the company that they were talking to for.
So you were involved?
No.
Okay.
I stepped away from it because I knew I would get accused no matter what. What they did have was they had some employee issues, that's what it was.
Well, I will, I will say that if you want to see, when it comes to transparency, we have quite a bit of that, because we get, we get where we're at on a budget every meet, you know, every meeting, we get all the bills. You know, we get a pretty detailed report, we get reports from the city administrator, we get reports from people services, we can get reports from our police staff. I mean, it's pretty transparent, I do want to remind council members of a couple of things too. Um, this is of our ethics book, you know, our code of ethics that we sign that members shall respect and adhere to in the city administrator's, administrator's structure of Arlington city government and as outlined in the city code. In the structure, the city council determines the policies of the city with advice, information and analysis provided by city staff, boards, committees and commissions and the public. Except as provided visibly called, members shall not interfere with the administrative function of the city or professionally use the city staff, members shall impair um the ability of staff to implement um the policy decisions. There's also one other thing I highlight, that members shall support the maintenance of a positive and constructive workplace environment for city employees and for citizens and businesses dealing with the city. Uh, members shall recognize their special roles in dealing with city employees and in no way create the perception of inappropriate direction of staff. Now, I'm not saying anything was, that, you know, asking for overtime is not inappropriate or things like that, but, you know, we also have to trust our city employees to, to do their job and then they're, you know.
You made a good comment to ask me and Mayor when we were talking about that. You said, and I remember what the exact phrase was, I'd have to go back and look to the tape, but something that there was nothing to hide, I see everything, I signed the checks, I'm in the office, blah, 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 how many times a week? We're not, we don't have access to that information. And, and, and sometimes what happens, it, it comes across that the city administrator is working for the mayor. And then we wonder how open communications we can get.
City administrator is working for the council and I'm just, I'm, actually, my role is just I sign the checks and I run the meetings and communicate with the public the best I can. Um, and Jess and I work together, I mean, we communicate, you know, we, she has, we bounce ideas off each other and then we present, we have, there is nothing that we have not talked about that we have never presented to council. Because there's, it's up to you to decide, I have no, no, I'm not going to tell people what to do, it's not my job. You know, at the meetings, I'll voice my opinion and give my, my point of view for you to discuss. But as far as it's still up, ultimately, your decision, but I'm just trying to say if what the board of council is with, you know, let, let our city staff do their jobs, they would, you know, if they stay, you know, we got our budget, we see what they're doing.
So, so maybe to clarify that, when you say let our city staff do their jobs, are you telling, and we're just talking about me now, are you telling me hands off, leave alone?
Well, can I remind you how many city, how many, how many city administrators we've gone through in the last just ten, fifteen years? I'd like to keep this one and keep a police chief and keep our public works longer than two years.
And I don't, I don't, I'm not against you asking questions.
Right, no, no, we're not.
And you know, I, I hope you understand that, that nobody here is against you asking Jessica, asking Glenn, sitting down with him and hey, this is, this is, you're, you've been elected by a group of people. You, you, you won the election, you know, those people talked to you and they had their concerns and your voice and your concerns from the citizens that elected you, exactly, right, it's fine, which is great. So, I mean, I, I don't disagree with, with you, you're not, or saying that you shouldn't ask them anything.
Maybe it's just, uh, it's, it's, it's coming across at this point, maybe it's because I'm new to this council, that I'm trying, I'm uh. I'm trying to correct. That's, that, that.
There's, there's nothing wrong with that, sir.
There, there's an attempt to.
This is fine, this is, this is way less than I thought it would be, so.
An attempt to squelch my concerns.
Yeah, no, we're not going to squelch your concerns, it's just, like I said, I, I just have a different view, I guess, so that's fine.
You know, our relationship is, is new in this role, I would like you to feel comfortable calling me and asking me these questions, like I said, I'm more than willing to share. I think where it becomes this over city staff, where it sometimes feel like it's like I'm trying to get you or there's a negative connotation with it, so maybe that's something we need to work through. Our working relationship, so I just want you to know, pick up the phone, tap me for anything, I'm more than willing to help.
It's not easy to sit at a meeting like last meeting and have three people jump on my throat. I apologize for you after last meeting, I apologize to you.
I am so glad, because, I mean, the illegal forum, I was, I, that, that's a serious accusation.
And it was illegal forum?
We were, no, it was not, we were not, no, it was not. Illegal forum is discussing business at the meeting and we weren't, we were, we, we were not discussing that. I was talking to a, a, a person on behalf of E D A to invite him to a meeting. And he was with me.
I'm just going to stop it, um, we gotta keep on track here.
Thank you.
So unless there's anything further to go on this specific topic.
Yeah.
Okay. I do apologize for that. Okay. Uh, indoor library report, indoor.
Well, I've got nothing but positives and I'm not going to ask for any more. Uh, my report was in the packet, uh, something I got fellowed every year from the state, um, I'll highlight some things from here. Uh, two big numbers that I always look at are circulation, that's the number of items that go off the door, books, U D Bs, I knew that. That was fourteen thousand five hundred fifty four items went off the library door. And then uh the other, the other interesting statistic that I always look at is people in the door, um, I had fifteen thousand five hundred fifty six. Another thing to highlight, uh, three thousand items went out of our door to other libraries, not that, that could be in the C D S region or that could be state library. So, um, I had eighty four programs with two thousand one hundred and fifty six. Um, about eleven thousand materials in our library and I spent about twelve thousand bucks on materials, so actually. So, um, my biggest programs are always the summer reading program and Arlen Ave. Usually Arlen Ave, I add somewhere between five hundred and six hundred people walk through, we have a book show and we started last year, a year before doing the story class. So, that's my report, um. We, we also have an active brand group, uh, the Apple Group, um, they hold a book sale twice a year, raise funds for programming that they don't want to apply for grant boards. To buy some extra books. So that's the report, I did have another thing that, that's not on the agenda, there were some policies that have been trying to get approved for a long time. Um, those are in there too, um. There's a computer use policy, an internet use policy, a loan policy, a wireless policy, a pager policy, and the big one is the collection management policy. Um, August of last year, the state passed a law with uh, earth before the horse, um, like you. And uh, to pass the law, saying, saying that in order to buy material for a library, you need to have a master's degree in library science. Or you need to be a licensed media specialist in the service. Uh, if you look around the state, there's a lot of small towns like Arlington and that, somebody in that library at high school at home, they do not have any. They don't have a master's or even a bachelor's degree, it's funny, um, I just happen to have a master's degree, so we're safe, um. But like the cart before the horse thing is they passed law with no direction unless whoever is, to those people that do not have this qualification. What are they going to do? So, um, so we should pass that collections development policy. If you look on the first page of the policy, there's a library attached for reconsideration, reconsideration of material form. That would be if somebody had an issue with items in, in libraries. They would fill out that form, it's always for library doors, and that's where we end there. So you need a motion for us to approve.
We need all, for the, to approve all the policies.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the policies, but libraries, please.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say. Ten with them, so, yeah.
All good?
Yeah, I heard you definitely, you were thumbs up.
Okay. So that's my councilman Ling, so that's my councilman Reed to approve uh library policies. One pair, say hi.
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 Both? Most passes.
Did you get your room? I have not yet, so I'm having trouble bringing somebody and I would really, it would be a nice to have some recommendations, but it's too wild. But I, I want, we go into the small projects, there's a lot of people that do not want to do those small projects. So if I had a recommendation for somebody that would do that.
Does he work on study damage?
Yeah, yeah, that, yep, yep. Or they don't want to take on a five thousand dollar project because they've got a fifty thousand dollar project somewhere.
I know a guy.
Okay.
I do. Does a lot of work in town, does a lot of work, I don't know, he's local, he's fellow, he's from the sewer, he's with the third elite sewer people. No, so I can, I can work on that.
Okay. I will probably hold off on doing it till the fall anyway now, because the summer reading program. Now, what other projects were they recommending in our, that's what I can.
Other stuff was just mostly buddies, so.
Yeah, right. And a code to get it in that room.
My code would be good.
And you got that, right?
I have that.
Oh. Oh, get him that code. That library committee wants that. I read that code, Brady.
That was, that was a pretty good library board, we had one. We got another one coming up this month, I know.
I like them.
All right, any other questions or? Okay.
Yeah, I got them.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, uh, item twenty four, the personnel committee. Oh, that's right, people service, I missed that one, sorry, thank you.
Please.
So, I mean, can we do a annual report from the highlights that happened in the past, some of the things that I've been working on, maybe just to get you guys to know some of the things? So, we had a treaty with, with uh, utility treaty, we were looking at proposals for water power, we received a proposal from F D H. I've talked to Jimmy Pounder multiple times from both in rank, he's been in the water tower about three years ago, we saw it's not come up so impressed yet, so that's what that's. A lot of water treatment plant are rehab, finally got it done last year, they negotiated damages from the project, it's only took to get completed, it's a chill. The plant has been working great, it seems to work best when it backlogs, it's completed about forty hours of runtime per week. But it seem to have any water quality complaints anymore, so that's working out good. Uh, we worked with Minnesota Water, Jess and I did, and we had a wellhead protection plant updated. That's one thing they might look if they put a well out there, if that's in our, it was on, I'm going to make a vote, I don't think that's a issue. I don't think those, so I think those will go that way. Waste water treatment, uh, new sliding gate, cameras were installed, so we could see the dog bird, and then we replaced the doors, they were rusted out here before we replaced windows out there, had to paint it. And we put on uh door handles, push them from the inside, so they're locked, and then we also rekey the doors. But is it going to come down and only remove the water plants, waste water plants, you're going to have to handle this situation. Where, where are they?
Are you going to put a lock box on the outside of it? Or like the merge, there is that? Yeah, with that new key in the door, just so if I have a requirement or something, you can get in there?
Yep, yeah. No, there's a code.
We should give them, we should give them the other clicker.
Could.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they should have a clicker.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, there's just code to get in there.
Gotcha, yeah, it'd be a good idea if they had it.
Yeah. Working with whole, whole pumps, yeah, I got them. Uh, slug return pumps, number one and three have been completely rebuilt, the one was re, number two was rebuilt a year before, it had a, a little close to fifty thousand dollars on it, so it was a better time. Uh, so the slugs tran, transfer pump in the basement was replaced last year, we kept the old one, we're going to have to rebuild sometime in the future. You know, we don't know how, it took a while to get that, we use that, so it's going to be cheaper than trying to buy another one after we go, so, you know, the budget for that, we might order it. Um, we hold nine, hundred ninety one holds of bio solids on plane twenty four, we borrowed the wagon from Lester Prairie, this is the new one we ordered, didn't show up and then uh, new one showed up a week after. So one thing we should do, it's still sitting there, the old one, but it's all, late summer, get that thing listed, so we can get rid of it, that'll be the timeless. Been working with whole miner on the road projects, turn bulk getting curb stops, turning water on and off, so they can set up temporary water lines as the project progresses. Lit station last year, we put a new backup generator at the school lit station, it was due, yeah. Uh, had annual maintenance, we'll complete on the lit, lit station, everything is in good working order. Over the time, I, we got the same controller and everyone's, everything's all been standardized at the same part, so. A lot of it was lucky, we had like neat strikes or electrical issues and then it ended up, we went to leave the Minnesota cities, paid a thousand dollars and, you know, that way I saved a few dollars and then it calmed through period. So. And then from our latest thing, like you all seen, we had Terry Rock from the N P C A who performed a compliance inspection at the wastewater treatment plant, we discussed this a couple of months ago. He issued a letter of warning for improper calibration of chlorine panel analyzer and a notice of violation stating that Northland drying is a significant industrial user. And that the city failed to not notify the M P C A about that, so, so.
The water you received fast.
Yeah, so both letters have been rescinded. The calibration is being done correctly and upon further discussion with the M P C A, Jeremy Logan, who is, he's the head of the whole lot, uh, in significant industrial uses. But as you cited, that Northland drying isn't even an industrial user, but not one that is considered significant. And the city already has a well written agreement with Northland drying in place and so, so that's it, it's all done, you have to dispose of. And why, we don't see a lot to get there. Three years of what we've been doing again. So, and that's all I got, if you have some questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Now, item twenty four, uh, recommendation to add PTO donation to uh personal handbook. So we had some employees request that we enact uh this policy, uh, because uh we don't currently have one. Um, and I'm concerned that uh we have um some employees that could potentially end up with significant illnesses. And other employees would like to be able to have the opportunity to uh donate, accrue PTO, the E S S T and comp time. Also, there are employees that still have sick leave banks, um, so we are basically allowing by this policy. City employees donate to other employees, um, in medical need, basically, is what it would boil down to. Um, I discussed this with Ken, um, some as well, uh, we've all, and I got a lot of this information from the League of Minnesota Cities, from other cities, it was kind of compiled all together. Um, with that, um, the one thing I want to make you aware of is uh the state of Minnesota is enacting a policy for pay of the use. Um, should start next year, so what the state of Minnesota, hard to say if they push it back or if they jump the gun. Um, so, and I know Ken had some, uh, he reviewed it and um brought that up as well, so. Um, it did go to the personnel committee, we just made minor changes, um, based on some recommendations from employees. Um, it did go to the personnel committee, we just made minor changes, um, based on some recommendations from employees that, that came. Um, so we built that in.
And I will note, our short-term disability program is very, very weak. Um, I think that needs to be reviewed, so this potentially could bridge some of that, and we figure that out. So I know when employees have catastrophic medical issues, and others wanna help out, this will allow that. Um, like one mentioned, the state is rolling out their own programs, however, we can help the state programs out. Um, and I think, you know, we can address that as that comes up. Other things can review?
Yeah, I didn't have any concerns over that, I checked it over, nothing was popping out, we, we might have to reconsider some stuff once, once, okay, leave it. Once all that goes through the full field in January, uh, we'll see, uh, but there's not much guidance, um, we wasn't gonna have to.
Which keeps that in mind for the budget, that's gonna be after our budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the P P O donation to the personnel handbook.
Motion to the councilman Meyer, secondly, councilman Ling, to approve the recommendation to add P P O donation to the personnel handbook. All fair say aye?
Aye.
Close? Motion passed. Great, anything else?
I just wanted to explain for covering for everyone, yeah, we really appreciate your.
Welcome back.
You're smiling.
Yeah.
I got one for you, while I talked to you about a couple times, the whole front corner of West Adams and Second Avenue. And two of their neighbors called me today. Oh, west corner of west, ah, excuse me, east Adams, southwest corner of east Adams and Second Avenue of southeast. This is the backyard between garage and, I don't think you could fit a five answers.
Okay, okay, I'll double check on that, I think we, I think that's the one we just cited. Okay, I'll double check, but. Right, and this, uh, Brian Boating, E D A, and this council meeting on June second, so, actually, the most good turn?
There's multiple here.
All second. Motion made on second, second, the councilman Meyer, the turn, the meeting, all fair say aye?
Aye.
Close? We can turn at seven fifty-nine. Thank you, everyone.
If you're single. Okay, so, okay, because I know we try, I try, I, so we have tried. We have the cameras, we have the, we have the meetings from morning to night, so. Okay, okay, that's kind of what I, that's, that's what I would say.
They do it, no, I.